Call to order the Tuesday, June 25th, 6 o'clock. Special meeting with regards to four items on the agenda. The clerk will call the roll. I am the clerk today. Record the attendance. Anderson Burgos. Bartley. Presnahan. Leahy.
Present.
Laborn Martinez.
Here.
Lisi. McGee, here. McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The City of Hoyok.
And the City Council.
First on the special meeting is item one, to discuss the temporary plan for payment for the auxiliary police officers. Make a motion, move from the table.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Captain Mearthy to speak or Counselor Mearthy, however he wants it. Now, in answer questions, I think we have a solution and he'll explain it. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Good evening, everyone. There we go. So, I know we requested this emergency meeting, one, thank you for granting it. And on Monday, met with the auditor and Kate McCoy, who does our pay and billing and road job finances. So, basically, we have a resolution for this whole problem that, right now, Kate McCoy has collected several thousand dollars' worth of checks that the auxiliaries have worked for, and those checks have been put into our off-duty account. So, the quickest way to resolve this, that resolves the City of any liability or concerns that auxiliaries could be deemed as employees, and it makes it a little bit quicker, is that the Hoyok Auxiliaries will actually have, and they do have their own bank account, I'm not sure the title, but it's basically Hoyok Police Officer, Hoyok Police Auxiliary Police Department. So, what will happen is through our DTS system, the auxiliary hours and names will be collected, and that way Kate McCoy will know how much money is owed to the Auxiliary Police Department. She writes a one lump sum check, which then is then given to the auxiliaries, they put it into their account. The auxiliaries then go through the listing we give them. Officer X gets $200 because of this job and that way. So, this way, we can almost immediately start paying them. We do not need a duplicate account that we were first asking for, and as I said earlier, it absolves the City of any concerns of liability or the fact that someone someday may consider themselves an employee to the city, and we can get going on it immediately. So, it's pretty much an update.
So, does it need an actual...
So, just for everyone's knowledge, because it is a little confusing. Last meeting, the police came to us asking for a revolving fund.
Correct.
And needed it last minute because of the new system they're putting into place, and therefore, they couldn't collect the money in order to then pay out through that system to the auxiliary police. As was referenced, they used to send a bill to the, call it Verizon, as an example, send a bill to Verizon, Verizon would cut a check to auxiliary officer and pay them, and they'd be in charge of their own tax liability of what they owe for taxes. Here, with the new system, they're going to collect the money, try and house it in a revolving fund, but instead, we're just going to put into a separate line item, kick a check back out to auxiliary, which is an auxiliary, whoever the head there is, will cut a check to that officer for what they've worked. So, really, we no longer need that revolving account. The system's already in place, and this is what Captain Mearthy discussed last time as an option C. He looked into it. It's valid. It can be done. That way, they get their money quicker, instead of trying to piecemeal it through several different ways of doing it, and their money, they're entitled to get it to them right now. So, right now, instead of asking for a revolving count, which is what we were going to do, they're now shutting that down and saying the system's already in place.
Sounds good. Motion that the order be complied with?
Second.
Alright, motion that the order be complied with. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor McGinn, I'm sorry.
Just a suggestion, which I'm happy for the auxiliary, because they deserve, not only deserve to pay, but they do so much good work, and not just in this area, but in many other areas where they're not paid. Matt, did you say you're going to make them employees?
No.
Yep.
By doing what we're going to do now, it absolves that fear some people are having that they would be considered employees. It wipes it away completely.
Okay. Because I was thinking that you could call them, your city could subcontract with them.
They have, the ones who want to do road jobs, they've already filled out the forms to be considered private vendors.
Okay.
We took care of that about a month or so ago.
Okay, because that way, the city can pay them as private vendors, and I think that was, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. Any further questions for Matt? No? So, it was, that was complied with. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Item number two is from the City Council, approve the dedication of a new full-size court for Eli Park in honor of Miriam Miranda. This is Park and Rec. So, motion is to take it up. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. And Terry is here. Terry did send an email out. On behalf of the Hoyok Park and Rec Commission, I request that the Council approve the up-and-coming dedication of the park. On June 6th, the Park Commission approved the dedication. However, they forgot, in essence, to file it through the Council, because it needs City Council approval. So, it was, in essence, the dedication is June 29th. We don't meet till August 5th, so, just trying to get this into, allow the dedication to go forward, and...
Make a motion, it's approved?
Second.
Anyone have a question for Terry at all first?
No.
No? Alright. So, the motion is to approve the dedication. All those in favor.
Aye.
Counselor Lisi.
I'm going to, just because we have two representatives from the Parks Department and the Commission, if they wanted to say a few words about who Miriam Miranda is since we're doing the naming.
Just tap on it, make sure it's working. There's a switch right there.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
See, I'm not used to this. Hello, thank you, Terry. My name is Israel Rivera. I am Commissioner on the Parks and Recs Department. I've been on there for about a year now. I've been working closely with the Miriam Miranda family for about, I would say, myself personally, about three, four years, but I've been attending the tournament for about 14 years, or 13 years. This year would be the 14th year. And the Parks and Recs Department has been a part of it since its inception. I guess I would say personally, thank you guys, right? The family is extremely grateful. People can't be here today, who has been the guy leading the cause since, I believe it's 2005, but if he was here, he can actually explain it more. I met Miriam Miranda when I was probably about nine, 10 years old, in the flats. She lived on the other side of the flats, which, when you're a kid in perspective, it feels like walking towards like Kmart Plaza, but it's really not. I remember the first time I went over to the house, I used to hang out with her other son, Louis Rivera, who's Chana, about my age group, and I remember the first time I went over there and I knocked on the door. It was Cuca, the other sister who's not, oh, she's right there. She just got here. She opened the door, and I arrived, and she's like, "What you want?" I was like 10. She was probably like 15, I don't know how much older you are, but anyways, her mom was, her mom comes out of the room, and she's like, "Ah, get out of the way. Who is this negrito lindo?" This cute kid. And I look over and I was like, "Oh, hi." And then she comes, she says, "Chana, your brother's here." But at the end of the day, right, long story short, after that moment, every time I walked into the home, it felt like it was a home away from home, and that's what she always made the community in the flats feel like, from my years of knowing her and from what I've heard in the past, like organizing different community events, volleyball tournaments, cookouts. She really made it happen in the flats when I was a younger kid, growing up. And for me personally, this is kind of like giving back to her, giving back to the family, and as well, giving back to our community, because a lot of people really knew who she was.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for your time.
And Terry, we're all set for the dedication. Everything's set up, and that's confirmed the time, June 29th, 11 to 3.
Yep, June 29th, 11 to 3 years old. Yeah, we're going to start the dedication around 11, 11:30-ish. We kind of wait, want to wait for the kids to come. We start up, we start around 10, 10:30-ish, but the kids usually take about an hour, an hour and a half, till they actually organize themselves, but...
I'll email all of you the correct time.
And everyone will get an updated email for the time. Any further question? Counselor Laborn Martinez.
I just want to say that I've been also supporting this family since their initiation of this effort, and also to remind ourselves that in commemoration of Miriam, she, you know, she died in a act of violence, a situation in the flats, and the community themselves was the one who came up with the also idea to support this acknowledgement of Miriam Miranda to be named, the park to be named after her, because she gave so much to the community.
Thank you.
Once again, I'm happy to say, pass.
Second.
Alright, so motion is to approve. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Item number three is the marijuana buffer ordinance that was laid on the table at the last meeting.
Motion, take it off the table.
Motion is to take it off the table. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. This is the ordinance that ends, and, let's see here, amending, sorry, not ends, amending any cultivation facility not located, not to be located within 200 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, any grades 1 through 12, measured in a lot, permissible under Mass General Law 94G, section 5B3. And then, this was the one that was on, should have the amended language, I do believe, that was put in there.
Right.
So, it would have to be pursuant to last meeting's amended language. Counselor, so, take it off the table. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Counselor Murphy.
So, first of all, let me thank yourself and the mayor for agreeing to put this on the special meeting agenda. I've talked to the two businesses that are, have been trying to have cultivation companies come in, and in both cases, they are time-sensitive. I met with them last Thursday after the meeting. We have a chance for two companies to come in, one that already does production, someone else, and will do cultivation in one facility, another one that is looking to lease and do cultivation. It is the order that I filed and met with people from the schools and the neighborhood and gave my word in terms of what I would support, and so, I'm hoping that the Council can recognize, I mean, if you want to expand it beyond this, I would hope that you come and file another order, but I am hoping that tonight, you can pass this ordinance for cultivation only, which will create approximately 50 to 100 jobs, if everything goes the way, hopefully it will go, and a lot of those jobs will be for residents of Ward 2, and these are both businesses on Main Street which would qualify for this buffer zone.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the new legal language that was sent to us to amend the order that was tabled at our last City Council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say. This is the one that came before us, and we amended it. That amended language is not on this one, but it has to go in compliance with what we did on the Tuesday meeting.
So...
That language will have to be in here.
Right.
So, with your motion to make it, to make it a super secure, that we are doing it that way.
Yes.
It was seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Anything else?
Now, make a motion to approve the zoning amendment as amended.
Second.
So, before we get into that, Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. I do want to say that I will be supporting this this evening. I understand that it is a time-sensitive issue and that the folks that have been approached have only been approached for cultivation only, given that the production happens elsewhere with this potential business that's coming in. But I do, I do want to, you know, restate for the record that I would prefer that the buffer be dropped to 200 feet for all of manufacturing, because that's how the permits come into the city. We don't distinguish under manufacturing the discrete processes that could take place, whether it's growing, cultivation, extraction, or other sort of processing. And so, I will be filing something to broaden the 200-foot buffer to the entire manufacturing component. Again, it's a legal product, it's manufacturing, this, there's no way that anyone, given the security measures that we have to approve locally, that anyone off the street would be able to access these products. And so, given the confidence that I have in the security measures that we have to approve through the special permit process, I'll be filing another order to, again, expand the 200-foot buffer to all of the manufacturing components.
And the motion. Okay, so, the motion, if there's no, Counselor McGivern.
Sorry, Mr. President. What language are we adopting?
So, the, I know it's a little confusing. The last meeting, we had the legal language before us, which was amended and approved.
On the floor.
What?
On the floor.
On the floor, yep. So, obviously, Legal hasn't given us the new language, so, through Counselor Bacon's order, it's adopting the ordinance with the amended language that was approved last Tuesday's meeting.
That would, I don't know.
No?
My amendment was to accept the new language that was sent to us to be taken up at this meeting tonight. That was my amendment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misinterpreted.
I was misinterpreted.
I missed, okay. So, as is, and this, I did show it to you, you're, this is the way you want. So, let's back up then. On the floor, we amended this to add 200 feet cultivation facilities only as permitted under law, however, any MME can do manufacturing only under conditions to a special permit. That's what we did, add in there, and that was approved. So, now, we're saying we're taking that out.
Correct.
Correct.
Alright. Does that answer your question?
That's what I thought the amendment was. The amendment to the amendment.
Alright, so, we're amending, yeah, go ahead.
I don't think I have to preach to the City Council, but the reason I made the motion to make the original amendment was twofold. One, in a spirit of compromise, because there was not enough votes to pass the original ordinance, even with the confusion with the language, the way it came out of the ordinance committee. And two, because the history of Hoyok is exactly what we're asking here. Manufacturing is what this city was built on. The premise of manufacturing, the planned neighborhoods, schools, stores, everything from mom and pop to delis, to supermarkets, housing was all about within distance of where you worked. That's what the city is designed for. To say we can't have any manufacturing in a manufacturing zone that has existed for over 100 years is not correct. We should be attracting as many businesses as we possibly can. I'm not against cultivation only, but I believe, and I made the argument last week, because I worked in a manufacturing setting for 10 years in the 80s, and it exists, and it is designed to exist in these neighborhoods. It's not an issue, and I don't, I haven't heard what the issue is yet, and that's why I made the motion, and I'm asking that people consider this before we take this amendment out. And I think the compromise is, it still is not, even if it passes the way I vision it, it still doesn't mean there's an automatic, you know, right for any manufacturer to come within that 200 zone. It still takes a vote of this council to issue a special permit.
Yep. So, we did vote on her motion, and it was approved, so that was given clarification. Want to reconsider that?
Well, that's not the motion that I heard you read. That's why I asked.
So, the motion was to approve as is in front of me, of which I did raise a point that should be with the language before, so if there was confusion on that, we can, once again, take it and make sure we're all clear on what the vote is. So, the motion is that we adopt the language as it was originally filed on Tuesday without amendments. No or yes?
No.
Counselor Bacon.
So, my motion was to adopt the language that was forwarded to us by Legal.
For the special meeting.
For this meeting tonight.
Regardless of what Legal sends to us, it was amended on the floor. That's the whole point.
Correct.
So, we have to...
Which is why I offered the amendment.
We took that off the table. That's what we took off the table. That's what's laying there.
Correct.
Them sending us a brand-new one is not something, we got to deal with the one that's on the table. That's why we took it off the table.
Correct. And so, then, I made the motion to amend what we had taken off the table with the new language that had been presented to us from Legal.
And that's where the confusing part, the new lang, the new language, which in essence would...
That was my motion.
Which would, the new language should have incorporated what we approved on this floor.
No, because it was not...
Now, you're saying, no, the new language that they're giving us. Go ahead.
We did not approve the language on the floor.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
We, it needed nine votes.
We approved, be clear, we approved the amendment.
The amendment?
It didn't pass.
Correct.
The amendment is still, the language that was amended into that order is still there. It didn't have enough votes to pass as is, so it was tabled.
Correct.
With the amended language. That does not leave.
So, my motion was to do a further amendment to the language as it sits that we took off the table, to use the updated language that we all had sent to us prior to this meeting tonight. So, I, it has been further amended on the floor, as we had amended it twice before, at this point.
So, we'll be real clear. This is what they're offering up, counselors. Any cultivation facility shall not be located within 200 feet of any pre-existing public or private school providing education, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12, measured from the lot lines, as permissible under Mass General Law 94G. Any school that exists between 200 and 500 of proposed cultivation facilities, lot, line shall, at the time of notice of public hearing for any special permit, require of the proposal cultivation facility also be notified of said public hearing. Notice shall be sent in writing via certified mail return receipt to superintendent, principal persons in control of schools within the impacted area. Any and all remaining marijuana establishments shall not be located within 500 feet of any pre-existing public or private school providing education, or pre-existing kindergarten, kindergarten, or grades 1 through 12, measured from the lot line of properties, as permissible under Mass General Law 94G, section 5B3. So, it is now new language which was offered up from the prior. Does that now explain it? Counselor McGivern.
Be nice if we had it in writing on our table, and if the Law Department didn't put the language in that was adopted at last Tuesday's meeting, I don't understand, because that's a, that's a very serious violation of our rules.
I don't disagree. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Law Department doesn't choose language.
Anyone further? So, the motion was, and it was adopted, you can do a motion to reconsider now that we now clarified the correction.
Should we just table until we get everything in writing in the correct way?
If we do, if we, if we...
Counselor Murphy.
If we table it, we're almost, almost for certain, losing two businesses that are ready to come. One's been negotiating for three or four months, one has just received an offer from another town. In both cases, I have been told that if we don't do this tonight, chances are, one or both of those will go elsewhere. And, I mean, if I can also, the, the written ordinance that came from the Law Department, I think Friday, if I'm not mistaken, it might have been Monday, but sometime in the last couple of days, does emphasize the cultivation, which was part of the original order, and it was not in the original ordinance that was sent to us, and that was what we tried to amend, and that was what the public hearing was related to. So, I would, I'm urging you to pass what the Law Department sent to us this weekend, which would, any cultivation facility shall not be located within 200 feet pre-existing, all of that kind of thing, in the, in the hope that we will encourage those two businesses to say, "Yes, we're coming to Hoyok." Those are two Main Street facilities in Ward 2, and again, these are the kind of things that I have talked to constituents and I have talked to the schools to try to make sure that everything was okay with them. So, I'm urging you to pass the ordinance as submitted by the Law Department for this special meeting. Thank you.
Anyone further? So, before you is the language, you should have a copy on your desk, I do believe.
If you want to see it.
With regards to the ordinance that was amended, or an email that Counselor Bacon made, we did approve, but now that there's clarification on it, that is still what is on the table for a vote. No further questions?
Can you just say that, what's on the table for a vote?
The one I just read.
Why isn't the one that we put on the table, on the table for a vote?
That's why we got the clarification. It was not there, I agree, and that's why I brought it up. We now have clarification from Counselor Bacon, myself, as to what did transpire, which is, they didn't provide us with the ordinance that was laid on the table with the amended language. They did not. That is clear as day. Now, it has been amended again, of which Legal has given...
I haven't been provided with anything, so, I'm just asking.
Yep.
And this is a new way of doing business. I'm not going to forget this one.
Yep, I'm not disagreeing. We're under suspension of the rule, so, Legal.
This is, you know, business that was done outside of this room.
I thought an email was sent to everybody.
I think I'm confused. The City Council made an amendment, which means you need a new legal language, which was then submitted to the City Council.
Correct.
To be voted on. I'm not sure where the broken rule is. You were given draft legal language, you amended it, which means you need new legal language, which was then submitted, which then needs a vote, which is up for tonight.
No, no, to be clear, you had your legal language that was submitted to the City Council meeting last Tuesday, of which, at that meeting, they added in language, 200 feet for cultivation facilities only, as however, any MME can do manufacturing, only vendor conditions to be by a special permit. That was adopted and supposed to be put in to this language.
And is it not in the language that was submitted Friday?
I have nothing, I have what I just read right here. That's in my folder.
No.
Which does not have that amended language. However, Counselor Bacon has said, amending what was laid on the table and taking up what was filed is what we should be voting on, which then is, you are removing what was amended at that meeting. That's where we stand.
Is it two separate votes?
Well, right now, the only vote is that we accept, under amendment, the language that was submitted from Legal, which is the one I just read to you.
Without the, all other manufacturing permits could be in the 200-foot buffer by condition of the special permit. It's without that segment. Because that's what Linda amended on the floor.
We haven't voted on that yet, though.
No, we haven't voted, well, actually, we did. Be clear, we did, I said, "All in favor of the amendment, yes." "All no."
I had my hand up, and then you recognized me, and I made my case.
No, that was after we made a motion to, we already accepted that motion, we made a motion to accept and go to a vote, and I recognized you at that time. So, for this, currently, that's on the motion, is the motion would be to, I do believe, pass the first reading.
Pass the first reading.
Motion to pass the first reading as amended.
Second. Motion is to pass the first reading as amended. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Motion that the passage be ordained.[1740.04]
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amended ordinance as amended. Hopefully that made sense.
Can you make the last rea- can you read it again, please, now, so we can be clear while we're voting?
Yep, so it now reads, "Any cultivation facility should not be located within 200 feet of any pre-existing building or public school providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades one through 12, measured from the lot lines of the impacted properties as permissible under Mass General Law 94G, Section 5B3. Any school that exists between 200 and 500 of the proposed cultivation facilities, lot line shall, at the time of notice of a public hearing for any special permit request of the proposed cultivation facility, also be notified at said public hearing. Notices shall be sent in writing via certified mail return receipt to superintendent, principal of persons in control of schools within the impacted area. Any and all remaining marijuana establishments shall not be located within 500 feet of any pre-existing public or private school providing education to pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades one through 12, measured from the lot line of impacted properties as permissible under Mass General Law 94G, Section 5B3." Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be voting yes in favor of the language that should not be in front of us, because I know the intent of Counselor Murphy and the ordinance committee was to do the right thing for the purpose of these new businesses that are looking to locate in the city of Hoyoke. I'm going to leave it at that, but this is not the way to do business.
I don't disagree. So, motion was to pass, passage be ordained. I'll call the roll. We'll just go in alphabet order. Anderson Burgos is out. Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Bresnahan?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Juan Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Elise?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tolman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Valentin is out. With your vote, you've approved the ordinance with, as amended, say it that way.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Item four is that the city council adopt the attached letter of support urging the House Joint Committee on the Budget to pass the amendments that would give the MSBA tools and programming that would increase the reimbursement the city receives from middle schools. Much take it off the table.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? You should have a copy on your desk as to all the members that it's going through. I want to thank Counselor Elise for drafting this letter. This is to send to the conference committee in order to urge them that due to being under receivership and due to our issues that we have here, that they allow us that ability to have that increase. Under discussion, Counselor Elise, or?
Just very briefly, this is a amendment that has been made to the budget at the State House for the fiscal year 2020. There's now a conference committee, so the amendment passed through the Senate, as we all heard, and now it's in conference committee. And the local contribution formula is the name of the amendment, and it would create a pilot program that would allow the MSBA to allow qualifying municipalities to receive all allowable incentive percentage points, which we're currently excluded from because we're designated an 80% community, and we know that new construction is capped at 60%, and so we're not coming anywhere near that 80% because new construction is not one of those 80% of eligible costs. And so this amendment would say that because we are currently in a state of receivership, and we also have been experiencing a decline in student enrollment, those two prerequisites allow us to qualify for the full battery of incentive points. More money if we could get it.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support this, and I, and I know this is the amendment that Senator Homicyn had filed, and, and it, it will approximately give the city, if it passes, an approximately between four and five million additional dollars. Still leaves us a long way from what we need, but it's, it's certainly an advancement from where we are. So I would thank Senator Homicyn for filing the amendment and for Representative Vega, and I would also congratulate Senator Lewis, who is the education chair, for helping to promote this, so.
Counselor McGivern?
With all due respect to Senator Homicyn and to Representative Vega, this is not the message we're supposed to be sending. Incentives should be outright. It's, it's the construction formula and the cap, and the eligible cost should be construction costs. We heard Whitney Anderson, we heard the executive director of the MSBA in this seat right here, sit here and tell us, our project is not a Taj Mahal proposal. It was well thought out, well conceived, and what it were, what you will be getting out of it, and he called it the master plan, he understood what the city proposed, is something that would, would take care of a lot of, including a $4 million annual savings to operations of schools, a lot of what communities should be doing. And this is what, that's what the MSBA wanted. When they, when they drafted the construction formula, he told us, you know, they, they were going, they were in a situation where the governor came to him and the state auditor came to him and said, this is out of control because communities are getting 90% back, they don't care what they're going to build, whatever they want to build, and we, we give them 90% back. And they draft, they were looking at $330 million they had to overcome, and they came up with this formula of a construction cap. In some years, the construction cap might make sense. It doesn't make this sense, but more important, it doesn't make sense to a gateway community that we have to beg for an incentive to get a few million dollars. There's not enough votes right now in this room for the bond. A few million dollars is not going to get the nine votes necessary to pass the bond. The project is dead. If we don't get the state legislature to address the cut construction cap, there should be no cap for eligible, you know, construction costs, and there should be something done because we are a gateway community, and I'm tired of bedroom communities not supporting the communities that are taking care of, of the low-income families of this, of this state. It is time that we take a stand, not on a few million dollars, but on the 80%.
Yep, Counselor Bacon?
And I would also note, we would need the state to support the funding of the demolition of the building, because that is not covered by the MSBA either.
Counselor Elise?
Thank you. I do know that Counselor Va- I'm sorry, Representative Vega is working hard to have conversations with others at the state level to find additional, you know, pockets of money, but this is what is before the state legislature's budget conference committee, and so this is something that's ripe, that I think we need to take advantage of while also pursuing other pots of, of money. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, that's, we, we put in our vote, we put the cart before the horse. Generally, what we wanted, I would think, as a public body, we, Mr. President, we would have wanted to have the numbers firm prior to putting on a ballot. But we didn't do that. We did it the backwards way. We don't even know what the numbers are. We don't even know if we're going to pass this, the bond, and maybe we'll just have an informational ballot question in November. I, I, I have no idea how, how the vote's going to happen, but I, I heard what my, what my friend said, that, that the votes aren't here, maybe they are, maybe they aren't, but this is something that should have been, you know, the numbers should have been resolved. We should have taken a vote on the bond prior to taking a vote on the ballot. We, we didn't do it that way. So consequently, here we are with an unknown ballot question, Mr. President. We, we can't even tell the public until we, until, until we can take this up in committee in, I think, the fall. I don't want to put words in Joe's mouth, but I think it's going to be the fall when, when we're going to take up the issue of the bond. And I'll let the finance chair speak to that if he, if he wishes. So, this is just an unknown question, and this adds yet another cloud on this. And here we are clutching at straws, like we always do, Mr. President, clutching at straws at the very last minute, like we've done in my seven and a half years on this board. That's why we set the tax rate at the very last minute, that's why we do everything at the last minute. And here we are at the end of the fiscal year, the Commonwealth is at the end of a fiscal year. I did read, see in the, in the newspaper that it looks like they're not going to have the budget passed on time, but it's, it's just another, another last-ditch effort that I think adds more confusion, why I don't think we had thought this out well enough, Mr. President, why I posed a ballot question, this and among other reasons, as, as it stated. So, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this tonight. I, I think that there's, you know, I can't knock anybody for trying on this. I, I, I'm going to do it half-heartedly to see what we can get, and maybe get a little something extra, because I don't know what's going to happen in the fall, Mr. President. Nobody can predict how that vote's going to play out. And whatever little bit, bit we can get extra, if possible, that's going to help the taxpayers if this debt exclusion Prop 2 and 1/2 override passes in, in November. But I, I, listen, I'm not knocking anybody, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is probably not the best way to go about it. I think that there are other communities that have received well more than the 57%. I think the Spring, City Springfield did a lot better than that number after the hurricanes, when they had schools being built, way better than this, and, and that there are other municipalities in the Commonwealth, and, and we're one of the handful, along with Lawrence. I, I think there might be another community in school receivership other than Lawrence and Hoyoke, but those are the two of which I'm aware. And, you know, if this is not a desperate time for the Hoyoke Public School System, what we're deserving of at least the 80% is, as Counselor mentioned before, up, up to 90%, and other, and, and I think school districts have received even a higher percentage. And yet, we're, we're not even being considered. The, the president of the MSBC was here, forget it, guys and gals. Forget it, you got no chance. I, I mean, you know, Mr. President, this is just a really, this is a tough situation. I mean, we'll, we'll play it out. I, I'm glad we can at least try for something extra. I, I don't know if anybody has a sense to set a timeline on this, Mr. President. I, I hope, I hope they do. Whether it's, whether the clock runs out on June 30th, or, or, or this, this committee will make a, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a conference committee. So I, I think this pretty much runs out once it passes a budget.
July 1st.
So, when the budget passes. So that's, that's it. And here we are at the last second.
I don't know, Mr. President, I, I just think that it's too little, too late. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I just want, I, I agree with Counselor McGivern, that in reality, the state shouldn't be looking at us and saying, you know, we're going to get this miniscule calculation to help you out. They should be in a position recognizing both our economic situation and the receivership situation, that they would in fact be giving us more. And it was my understanding from Senator Lewis's office that Senator Homicyn had in fact tried to get the 80% reimbursement, and that through discussions, it ended up getting put down, and I think it was like 3.8 points that we can get towards our, so we may end up with 60.8% instead of 57. But I, I, I do think that he did try, from what I heard, so I just want to emphasize that.
I'll clarify that. I have spoken with Senator Homicyn and certain members of the House. The, the issue was, prior to coming to a meeting, I got a phone call saying that it is, it was passed, and they're going to try and push for the 80%. So I was running in here to tell you guys that information. And then when I got the legislation from Senator Homicyn, I started reading it, and I called him back, I said, this talks about incentives. He said, no, what we debated was moving you from 57, 58 to the 80%. And that's what I argued for, and that's what I voted for. And I said, yeah, but I'm reading your language, it says incentives. And he said, that was not my intent. So I did ask him to go into the committee and see if that's something that they can change or cannot. That, we're still waiting to see. Everything is in that conference committee to be debated. Whether or not they achieve that, once again, as members have pointed out, we're stuck waiting for them to tell us. But Senator Homicyn said he, when they fought for this and they were drafting it, that was the intent, and that's what the minutes of the meeting show. Whether or not they can change it, or we're stuck with the incentives as written, and we might be. This, I think, is just sending a letter to that committee to say, whatever you're going to argue that it was a pass or not passed, you got to give us something. Whether or not that still is enough or not, that's a second debate, but we're just slowly trying to get something out there to be proactive. That's what this is for. I'm not going to say it's the end-all, the win, but I do, I do agree with you. There has been a lot of confusion as to what really is in the conference committee, and I, and I do thank Senator Homicyn for taking as many calls as he has from me on this issue. So the motion here is to receive and send the letter off to, Counselor McGivern?
I, I just cannot vote in favor of this letter because it contradicts the original vote that this council took, which was your original order requesting exactly what you just talked about with, with the, with the state itself. The only way I could vote for, for sending any letter is if it includes language about our original vote and the 80%. Because if we send a letter that just talks about incentives, we're, we're sending the wrong message. We're sending a mixed message that we're okay with this. You know, the message has to be heard, because with all due respect, I know Don and Aaron are fighting for this, but with all due respect, there's a lot at stake here, and signing this the way it's written is not going to get the job done, and it could actually take us out of discussion for the 80%.
Yeah. Um, let's see.
And if I could, while you're looking, Mr. President, Counselor Bartley made a good point. Unfortunately, with the MSBA, we ran out of time, and the, taking the vote on the ballot question allowed the project to stay alive, potentially stay alive when they take their vote in August for the, for the, what's in front of them at the moment. We asked at the meeting with their executive director, do we have to take a vote on the bond? And he said, no. I've sensed, and, and, and I can't find my email, but I believe it's a requirement that that bond vote must take place within 120 days of the election itself. I'm not sure if Tanya knows that language, but I think I got that from, from Cinder. And, and there is, there is a deadline, there's the point on the bond vote itself. If the bond vote fails, then the project is off the table regardless of what the ballot question vote is.
Oh, I am, I'd rather it off. It's just always on.
Is there a way we can amend it to?
Well, I guess, I guess it- Counselor Elise?
So I would say, I thought that we did send a letter following the conversation that we had a month or two ago. You had initiated something, and I think we had sent a letter to-
We sent a letter, it wasn't to this committee.
No, it was to our state delegation.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, again, I wrote this because this is what is currently being debated. This is something that's real and tangible, that we can grasp if we strike while the fire is hot, iron is hot. I don't think, in my opinion, that this precludes us from continuing to ask for more revenue streams to get us closer to an 80% reimbursement. This is just saying, this is what's on the table, we want you to do this. It doesn't, it doesn't say at all that we're okay with this only, that this will satisfy us. I think we should absolutely be pursuing additional revenue streams wherever they may be concurrently.
Counselor Leahy?
I just want to agree with Counselor Elise. I just think that any avenue that we take is a positive avenue. I don't think it's going to set us back at all. I think that we just need to have our messages heard, and we need to speak them loud, clear, precise, and make sure our senator and our state rep are doing their job down there and making sure that they're bringing back the money to Hoyoke. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I've got to really agree with what Counselor McGivern said. We, we, we've got to send a much more forceful message to, you know, what they're, what they're, what they're talking about, what they're doing in a conference committee, it's table scrapings. It's not enough to put us over the line. It, it's not enough to get the, it's not enough, I don't think, to win voter approval or for us to be able to afford it. All right? This, this is, it's a, a nice effort, but I, I think we got to be much, much more forceful in our approach to how we handle this.
Anyone for, Counselor McGivern?
I gave into the spirit of compromise on the last vote this evening. I'm not going to give into spirit of compromise on this vote, and I suggest highly before we take the vote that these things work a little better when they're unanimous. If they're not unanimous, they send another mixed message.
Is there an amendment we'd like to make to this, or Counselor Elise?
I, I mean, I really feel like this is something that is concrete, it's discreet, it is a thing that is before the budget conference committee. There's a, there's a language with the ability to give us additional funding. And, and yes, it may be four or five million dollars. And I'm happy to write another letter, not, not this letter, to this conference committee, but another letter that says to perhaps the commission of, the commissioner of education that we deserve to, to get funding that brings us closer to 80%. That does not compete or disregard or undermine the fact that we have the ability to qualify for these mon- for these monies through MSBA. Now, we could absolutely pursue the state legislature for additional monies. But this is, this is asking to create a budget line item and pilot program for MSBA. So, this is within the MSBA money, the tax dollars that we all contribute to, to disperse some of that MSBA funding through incentive points to the city of Holyoke. Again, I'm happy to draft another letter, a more strongly worded letter, and we can figure out to whom that letter goes to. But this is the budget conference committee that's considering this budget amendment. This is one small thing. I don't think we should pass up this thing. I think we should absolutely be pursuing multiple avenues and multiple representatives in Boston to make sure that we're getting what we deserve.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only catch that I see is that you have indicated that Senator Homicyn is talking with the committee to try to clarify the breadth of what they're considering. So, I think the danger of us kind of blessing this undercuts him trying to clarify what those minutes represented. That's my only concern.
Yeah, I mean, I think he was clear in a sense of what was passed and what the conference committee has is, is this. They have the incentive point, language only. Whether or not that can be amended, he, he said that might not be possible. He'll try and get clarification. I mean, he wasn't warm and fuzzy saying, "Oh, I can get a change. We'll fix it." But I argued with him, not argued, but I debated with him, saying, "Hey, look, you told me what was debated, what's in the minutes of your meeting were to increase to the 80 percent." Said, "Yes, but this is what came out."
Okay, so he didn't prevail in that.
Well, I still am waiting for an update on it. As was mentioned, they have till July 31st, and this has not been taken up. And I called last week on it. And it hasn't been taken up yet.
So, it just seems to me, if we added to this, we understand there's clarification around the 80 percent. And, you know, we are eager and hopeful that, that clarification can be accomplished in addition to this. You know, to me, that would kind of, but I do, if I may.
Hold on, hold on. I just want, I'm just reading one section, and I keep bouncing around. Let me put my fingers out. Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Lacy.
Yeah, thank you. So, Todd, I didn't, I haven't spoken to Senator Homicyn. You have. So, let me ask you, your gut feeling on your conversation with him. Should we approve this tonight, or should we not approve this tonight? Is this going to undermine his doing, his work?
No, I don't think it, it doesn't undermine him, no. I mean, what's before the conference committee is this specific order. So, I mean, but, and I think Counsel Bacon brought up a very good point. You could say at the second paragraph, "This pilot program would increase the state reimbursement for the MSBA approved, approved school building projects by allowing qualified municipalities to receive all allowable incentive percentage points and determining a project's grant percentage." You might want to say, "Or if the committee could also increase," I know that's bad language, but some, a sentence right after that saying, "Give them the option to say, 'Or you could,'" but on the committee to do an eight up to 80 percent.
So, let me ask you this.
And a sentence might achieve both goals.
And I'm not sure if this is.
Because you have till sometime in July that they're going to act on this.
Could we vote on this tonight with the understanding that you, as the council president, will change the verbiage?
I'd rather have everyone vote on one verbiage instead of me going in the back room, coming up with something that is not what the body wants. And I think Counsel McGovern does raise a good point. Everyone voting together, sending one clear message, saying, "This is unanimous. We want you to understand. The city is entitled to money on this." They really are. We're kind of hurting here.
I agree.
Counsel Lacy.
So, two, two things that I wanted to state is that, to the point that Counsel McGovern made, like, we, like, through the MSBA, we heard Jack McCarthy, president, say, "We will not get an 80 percent reimbursement through the MSBA." This amendment is to allow the MSBA to grant us the incentive points. So, just like, you know, let's stop there. If we want to come closer to an 80 percent reimbursement rate that we think we deserve, it's because we're, we're collecting pots of money that have nothing to do with the MSBA moving forward. Second of all, I'm happy to amend this language to leave the door open for conversations to happen around 80 percent in the state legislature. I would drop it into the final paragraph before sincerely and write something, "In the absence of a full 80 percent reimbursement rate, we encourage you to expedite this amendment." So, that way, it shows that we're still fighting, and we have our eye on an 80 percent reimbursement rate that we think we're entitled to. But if that's not on the table, then we encourage you to expedite this amendment.
Anyone else on that, or Counsel Murphy?
I'm thinking, I do think something at the end, but I, I kind of would reverse it and make it where, you know, we're emphasizing that we really need even a higher rate of reimbursement. While we appreciate the efforts to try to get us additional incentive points, the reality is it would put the city in an economic hardship, something to that extent, where, where the 80 percent would pretty much put us in a situation where we could do it. And I think if you could put it in that paragraph, then I think you're addressing two things. You're letting them know, first of all, that we do think 80 percent is what we should be getting, not 80 percent based on some formula, but 80 percent of the cost. And, and then second, we appreciate their efforts to provide incentive points, but that may well not be enough, something along those lines. And then that would, I think, address both of the concerns and hopefully alert them that, you know, cities like Holyoke can't be in a situation where we've got to take a little pittance here and a little pittance there. We need, we need a lot more money. That was my thought.
All right, Counsel Bacon.
I would just note, if we are going to add in something about 80 percent, we have to say of the total cost. Because from the MSBA's point of view, they already have given us the 80 percent of the allowable cost. So, we're getting into very technical language here. So, you know, otherwise, they could construe it that we're not understanding what they said.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
No, no, go ahead, Counsel Murphy.
I agree that it should be 80 percent of the total cost, not 80 percent of eligible cost.
Right.
And I think that, you know, the reality, not only should that be for Holyoke, that should be for any community doing it. So, you're not having to calculate, "Oh, we can't get this. We get this, but we don't get that." I mean, you got, you're building a school. This is the school you're building. Like Counsel McGovern says, "We're not building a Taj Mahal. We're trying to build a functional school building."
All right. How about, how about this? Last sentence before sincerely, "We encourage the committee to allow the city to qualify for the full 80 percent of total cost reimbursement and to expedite this amendment and provide a bit of relief to the city such as, cities such as Holyoke that are in the greatest need for state support." That way, it's asking for it, and it's also talking about this amendment. Does that achieve the goal?
We just, one added word, construction cost.
So, hold on.
I think it should just be, so, an effective reimbursement rate of 80 percent because that would be everything.
Not if it's 80 percent of the construction cap.
Right.
And it's nothing.
Correct.
That should be automatic.
Hold on, hold on.
That's why I'm saying total cost. I already pointed out we don't pay for debt. Yeah, we should have.
Of construction cost. All right, so, it would say, "We encourage the committee to allow the city to qualify for a full 80 percent of construction cost reimbursement and to expedite this amendment and provide the city relief, so on and so forth."
Total construction cost.
Is that, is that fair?
Counsel Sullivan.
Want to try one more sentence?
Total.
Well, it's under discussion. Go ahead.
Your formula does not work for the city with the lowest per capita income, highest unemployment rate, and lowest property values in the state.
Well, they already know that. I mean, that, that we.
I don't think they know that. I don't think we have to write it, but they should know it. But they don't.
I don't think they care.
The irony, Mr. President, of this is if we send a letter asking them to vote on this, whatever they debated and put in the conference committee, what we're saying to them is, "Hey, look, can you give us incentives that we can't be eligible for because we're automatically an 80 percent community, because we're a gateway community? There's no asterisk. But we can't get 80 percent because we're under 60 percent because of the cap."
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, the whole state is shaking their head at this. If the legislature doesn't understand what ridiculous rules they have made, you know, and I know the intent was, was to correct the formula and to give, actually, the MSBA, I think, proposed these, these rules, which make no sense. But their intent was to correct that formula that was out of control. But now, it's gone into a direction where you're strangling gateway communities, and other communities, the full communities are getting incentives on top of the construction cap. And we can't even ask for them without this amendment.
I don't disagree.
I know, but I'm just trying to get that on record.
And that's what, that's been the discussion with the membership up there, trying to figure out how to do it. As far as the amendment was given, Senator Homicyn believed it was one thing. That's what they debated. He was very clear about it. What has come forth now, in the committee, they might say, "We don't see it as an incentive point." I'm not saying they're going to. They might go right to incentive because it's cheaper. But at least if we have a letter that addresses both, which I think now we're trying to do, I think we're at least telling the committee, "You got to help us."
I agree. Because if we don't send both messages together, we're getting them, we're letting them off the hook.
Right.
Todd, do we have to suspend this meeting and introduce the next meeting?
Yeah, we're going to have to.
So, I think we should move along with this meeting.
Well, hold on, let's just, let's do this. So, the amendment, once again, was, "We encourage you, we encourage the committee to allow the city council to qualify for a full 80 percent of construction cost reimbursement and to expedite this amendment and provide a bit of relief, so on and so forth." Is there a second to that? Is that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I will take that. I will put into the letter, give it to Ryan, to then have Ryan send it to all those committee members.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn from this special meeting. Do I have to roll call on that one, Joe? For special, not totally, exactly the session. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll take five, call it five minutes. We'll start back at.
Four and a half.
All right. It says 10. Seven fifteen.
This was a literature class.